The following is a local resident producer's program. The program content is the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of Oshkosh Media, the City of Oshkosh, or your video service provider.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to another edition of I on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, your host, and on this evening's show, we're going to be talking with three different candidates, I hope. I'm not sure that the one's going to get here, but we do have one here for sure right now, and we're going to be talking about upcoming elections during this entire hour. So in this half hour, we're very happy to have with us Aaron Wojcowski.
Wojcowski, yeah.
Okay. And Aaron, you're running for State Senate District 18, which encompasses the Oshkosh area.
Yep.
And where else does it cover? What's the other area?
So Fond du Lac, a few counties from Dodge, and then everywhere in between.
Okay.
All the little towns there.
It's a big county, it's a big district.
Yeah, it is.
But nothing that you can't handle, I'm sure.
Yeah.
He's running against Dan Fine, who is seeking a second term, and this will be a fall election. I didn't realize what I was doing exactly when I booked someone for a fall election this time, so it's not going to be a spring election that Aaron's running in. It's the fall election, and we will have him back later when it gets a little closer to that time. But for now, we want to learn about you, and, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're throwing your hat in the ring and doing this.
Yeah, so like you said, my name is Aaron Wojcowski. I am 22, I'll be 23 next month. So, you know, I really am running because for the last 10 years, politics in Wisconsin has been hyper-partisan, it's been petty, and most importantly, we haven't been addressing the challenges that hard-working Wisconsinites face every day. And as a young person who's concerned about the direction of our state and the future, you know, I'm very disappointed and concerned with the direction that our state is going right now and those who are in charge. So I'm really stepping up because we need to get our act together and start tackling these issues.
Sure.
So that's really why I'm running.
Now, you are currently on the Winnebago County Board.
Yes.
You're the youngest member there.
Right.
And how long have you served there?
So I was first elected in 2016. I was, that was actually my first year ever to Oshkosh. I moved to the area for college, and I ran at 19, beat the incumbent who was running for reelection, and then I was re-elected in 2018. So my term ends in April, so it'll be four years when my term ends.
So this April?
Yep.
Okay. And are you running for, do you plan to run for county board again?
I'm not. I wanted to kind of pass on the torch to another student to make sure they have that voice on the county board, so.
Okay. What district do you serve in the county board?
16.
16.
Yep.
What's that area?
It's basically all of the campus, and then it branches out a little into the off-campus area, so part of the city. But a majority of it is students and young people.
Okay. During your service on the county board, have you sponsored any kinds of legislation that you've, you know, that you've brought forward?
Yeah, yeah. I'd say, so one of the first things I authored was simple, but it made it more transparent, made our process more open, and that was to allow people to come speak about any issue pertaining to the county. So before, people could only come and talk about issues on the agenda, and we ran into an issue where there were like 100 people who showed up to talk about an issue, and they weren't allowed to speak because it wasn't on the agenda. But it was a pressing issue that they cared about, and in my mind, that was wrong. So we quickly changed that, and that was one of the first things I passed, and I'm really proud that we got done on the county board.
Absolutely. When did that go into effect?
That was, I would say, 2017, I think.
Okay.
So it was earlier. I think it was in my first term.
Okay.
It's been a while now.
2017, approximately. What kind of results have you seen from that? Because I would think
Yeah.
... that it's, you know, better for people. They probably are more appreciative
Yeah.
... that they can just show up. Because I think the county board is kind of a weird animal. People don't really understand, in many cases, what the county board is
Yeah.
... and what it does. They think in terms of, you know, city, like they understand a city council, they understand a school board, but the county board is kind of a weird animal. And yet, when you want an issue discussed, and then you get there, like you said,
Yeah.
... and it's not on the agenda, and you don't know that you have to only speak on items listed on the agenda, that can be frustrating. I would be upset.
Well, and most of our meetings, we'll be lucky if we get a couple of people to show up and talk about the issues.
Yeah.
Most of the time, it's empty. And, you know, it's really interesting because we had some supervisors who were against it because they said, oh, this is going to open up a can of worms, or we're going to have to stay here longer. And, you know, in my mind, I'm saying, you're getting paid to do this, this is your job, it shouldn't matter how long you're here, we're here to listen to the people. And it's actually funny because we had someone who showed up in the 2018 meeting, who was no longer on the board, and they spoke and used that to their advantage when they were originally against it. So I think it shows that it benefited a lot of people.
Sure.
You know, even if it's one person, you know, we should do everything we can to make it more open and transparent.
I agree. Well, you know, the other problem that I see with the county board is the fact that, you know, there's a lot of people on there who are very, I don't want to say old, they've been there a very long time, and they are senior citizens, and I'm not knocking senior citizens. But, you know, it's tough also, on the other side of that, to find people to serve on the county board because, again, people don't really know what it is or what it does. But also, a lot of times, these meetings that you're on committees for, they're held during the day.
Yeah.
And if you're a younger person and you're working, you don't have a flexible work schedule, that can be problematic.
Yeah.
But yet, when you have people who have been there for so long, they sort of, I think, as with anything, you fall into a mindset of, this is working, it's working, you know, at least I think it's working, we think it's working, and so why change what's not broken?
Yeah.
You know, why fix something that doesn't need fixing? And that's not, you know, we have to change if we want to grow.
Oh, yeah.
And so thank you for authoring that
Yeah.
... and getting it passed. Have you authored anything else on the county board, or?
Yeah, so here and there, I'll sponsor resolutions that people bring up. I know we had a couple. One to do with redistricting, nonpartisan redistricting. We've actually pushed, since we've gotten more people on the board, younger people, more diverse minds, we've put forward some more resolutions on taking stances on state issues. And that usually hadn't been the case for a while, so one of them was putting a referendum to ask for nonpartisan. One had to do with closing the dark store loophole. I know I had one advocating the state to expand Medicaid when the budget had come around. And the big arguments usually are, well, this is state business, we shouldn't be dealing with this. But, you know, one, my argument is, we have a duty to, you know, advocate for things that, one, will benefit us as a county, because it may be a state issue, but ultimately, it affects us at the local level.
Yeah.
But, you know, these are good things that we can be working towards, and if other local governments are speaking up and kind of coalescing around an issue, it kind of puts pressure on the state to act.
Sure.
And I think we need that more than ever now.
Absolutely. Well, I think it's wonderful. I'm impressed already with just the few things that you've talked about, that you've done, and very effectively so, on the county board
Thank you.
... in three short years, you know? And so as you move forward with your candidacy for, you know, State Senate, and you close out your four years on the county board, how has your experience on the county board helped to prepare you and formulated how you proceed forward as you run for and you're hoping to be our next state senator in District 18?
Yeah, thank you for that. So, you know, as a young person, I started, I was 19 when I was first elected, and I'm almost 23, so I really grew up on the county board. I was joking with some of my colleagues that it's been quite a journey, but I've learned a lot. You know, I've passed four budgets now, four county budgets, and that's, you know, over $100 million.
Yeah.
You know, it's a big budget. So just having that experience that not a lot of people my age get to have, I've learned a lot about budgeting, really combing through and fine detailing, you know, what we're spending money on, if we're spending it the correct way, or if we need to change what we're doing. Because budgets are really our priorities as a state, as a government, and I'm hoping to bring that same knowledge to the state, those same experiences. But really, being on local government and the county board is what kind of got me thinking about the state level, because we interact with the state on a variety of issues, we work hand-in-hand, whether it's roads, whether it's healthcare, or funding from the state, we interact with them a lot. And a lot of the issues that come to me looking towards the state level was, you know, we want to do something at the county level, but we're kind of limited by policies that the state have enacted, kind of curtailing the power of local government. And that's when I started asking questions more about, well, you know, what can I do at the state level? What can I do to kind of change some of these issues? But it's really helped me grow as a person and helped me develop where I am on the issues.
Sure. You mentioned roads, so I think that's a good place to start with some of the state issues
Yeah.
... that we have. You know, Oshkosh roads are horrible, but that's a city responsibility. But state roads, highways and so forth, we have a real infrastructure problem when it comes to roads. We've got other infrastructure problems, but roads is horrible. There is a spot, for example, just from here to Nina, that, and they worked on this, this was all torn apart and reconstructed for I don't know how many months. And there's this big chunk of repaired material sitting in a section just before you get to Nina. I think it's like just before you get to GG, I'm not sure, it's somewhere in that area. If you drive Highway 41, north and south, it's on both sides of the highway.
Yeah.
And it's this long chunk, and it's very obvious, it's an eyesore just sticking out there, and I don't know why the state's not fixing it.
Yeah.
And that's a classic example of what's going on. And then all these roundabouts that are going in everywhere.
Yeah.
I don't have a particular feeling on roundabouts, but I think we're putting in way too many, and that's money that, millions of dollars
Yeah.
... that could be saved for other things. We don't need that kind of road repair, we need other road repair. What are your thoughts on road repair?
Yeah, so real quick with roundabouts, because we had a big issue right when I started on the county board, where Seabean Oakridge had a lot of accidents, so we had looked at putting a roundabout there. And, you know, it was a really long process of deciding whether that needed to go there or not, and we ultimately came to the conclusion that we needed a roundabout there, and the positives outweighed the negatives. So I think in cases like that, that's where we can put roundabouts. But I do agree that we need to look at all our options and not just go right for roundabouts. We need to focus on the main roads, highways, crumbling infrastructure. I think, you know, the plan put forward by Republicans originally, which was raising the registration fee, I believe it was, you know, there was a lot of controversy around that, and I think the main reason is because it really doesn't address the issue, and it's kind of unfair, because people who are coming from other states, Illinois, Minnesota, who are visiting, they're using our roads, but they're not really paying for them, you know? So we're putting more of the burden on everyday Wisconsinites, who yes, do use them, but we should be making sure that everyone who's using them is paying for them some way. So I think there's a couple of ways we can address that, and I think we need to re-enable the transit authorities, because we can't rely on the state to solve all our road issues. You know, there are state roads, but I think this is an opportunity where we can work with municipalities, local governments, to identify where the most need is for repairing our roads and our bridges.
So re-enabling the transit authorities, certainly that's one way to do it. I mean, do you have some thoughts on how to kind of get some more money to repair some of these roads?
You know, I'm still looking at the options. I think we need to, you know, as the governor said, keep all options on the table. I know there were talks about a modest increase to the gas tax, and I haven't really taken a position on that as of now, but I think we really do need to look at it. You know, just because you hear tax increases, everyone, you know, wants to run away from it, but sooner or later, we're going to have to address this problem, and we can't keep borrowing money to fix our roads.
Yeah.
The amount that we're paying for debt is, you know, going to get out of hand soon.
Yeah, really. What are your thoughts on toll roads? I'm not saying I'm in favor of them, but it doesn't matter, because I'm not running.
Yeah.
But we see toll roads in a lot of places. I know in Illinois, they certainly have a number of toll roads, and those toll stops are pretty pricey.
Yeah.
I mean, when they were first put into place, they weren't that expensive, but oh my God, you can't, I don't think you can go through a single toll there anymore for less than a buck 75 or something like that. And yet, what's funny is, I think Illinois has some of the, especially in the Chicago area, I think they've got some of the worst roads around
Yeah.
... and yet they're collecting all this toll booth money. See, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how we would approach that, because people who live here are paying through their taxes.
Yep.
And yet, then we want to say, okay, now you're going to pay a toll booth.
Yeah.
But yet, that would be a way of catching a lot of the interlopers from Illinois, who by the way, speed, and they don't obey any traffic signals in a lot of cases. They're horrible on our roads, and so I don't know. What are your thoughts on toll roads?
Yeah, I'm a little cautious as of now, just because I think when we think of toll roads, one, we have to think about the infrastructure. First, we're going to have to build all these places, the toll spots, and that's going to cost money. But I would say if we want to go towards toll roads, we need to make sure that that money is specifically being spent for road construction and bridge repairs, et cetera. Because I think what we've seen in some other states that maybe do that, the money doesn't always go towards that.
Yeah. Well, even here, we've seen things with cigarette tax money
Yep.
... that was supposed to go for victims of cigarette illnesses and cancer, and that money was raided to go for something else.
Yeah.
And I think that was done by Governor Doyle, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know.
Yeah.
But it was done, whoever did it. So I think earmarking it specifically for that is a good idea.
Yeah, and really what it's about is just being transparent and having that accountability, because we're seeing more and more that we're losing transparency and accountability in a lot of our, you know, big deals, government programs. And I think people wouldn't mind as much, as long as they know where their money's going. As long as they know it's being spent on things that are benefiting them, then they'll be okay with it. I can't speak for everyone, but, you know, it's a common ground to at least say, we're going to let you know and be transparent about where your money's going
Sure.
... and not spending it all over the place.
Sure. Well, and people's money is important.
Yeah.
I want to talk about the minimum wage.
Sure.
There's a third of Wisconsinites who can't afford basic necessities on their own, and part of the problem is they can't find work, they're unable to work, or they just simply aren't getting paid enough, so they end up having to work two, sometimes three jobs. And the current minimum wage in our state and the nation is 7.25 an hour. It's $12 to $15 in some states, with no negative impact on those places' economy. That's been proven. And 22 states have increased their minimum wages. Wisconsin has not, shamefully, increased its minimum wage in 11 years
Yeah.
... since 2009, and yet, everything else has gone up. We've got an aging population in many cases, they're on fixed incomes, things continue to go up, but not wages. Now, I understand, if you're elderly and you're, you know, on a fixed income, you're probably not working.
Yeah.
But there are some people who are retired, who go and get a part-time job to help, you know, supplement their income. And it's not, let's face it, 7.25 is not a living wage.
Not at all.
So would you, are you in favor then of bumping up the minimum wage?
Yeah, I mean, people, it's plain talk, you can't live on 7.25, and there's this argument that, oh, well, burger flippers don't deserve a high wage because they don't do work. And my mind has always been, you know, it shouldn't matter what job you're doing, you deserve, you know, to have a livable wage, to have working conditions that are safe, you know, to live in an environment that you can thrive in, and 7.25 isn't cutting it for people. And especially for young people these days that are having to deal with the cost of higher education, and having to pay for a car, having to pay for healthcare if they're not covered under their parents, they need that extra income to pay for all of those things.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
And it's just unconscionable that we haven't raised our minimum wage, at least to account for inflation. You know, if you look at other states around us, Minnesota is doing far better than us in a lot of areas, and they have raised their minimum wage, they're investing in people. Because the truth is, when you invest in your working population, it uplifts your overall economy.
Absolutely.
Because they're spending money in the economy, they're doing things, they're educating themselves, they're investing more in themselves, and that's what we need in Wisconsin.
Yeah.
Especially in this area.
And I know when this whole talk about raising the minimum wage to something that is a livable wage, you know, when that conversation first started a number of years ago, people said, oh, these businesses, they're going to leave the states who do this. And I said, McDonald's, Hardee's, wherever, you know, whatever fast food restaurants are there in these places, they are not going to tear down their shingles
No.
... and leave the state. You're not going to find a McDonald's that just leaves an entire state of Wisconsin, for example.
No.
That's just ridiculous. And again, the studies bear out that a higher wage does not negatively impact, you know, the economy in the areas that have these better wages.
Yeah. And as I, like, I went to school for economics, that's one of my degrees, so, I mean, we looked at this heavily. It's something that I've always been interested in, because, you know, when you, the problem is when you look at it on a basic, you know, supply and demand graph, that's always the argument that, oh, if you do this, you know, people are going to leave. But you can't quantify the complexity of our economy on just a simple bar graph, on a simple supply and demand chart.
Right.
There's just so much more that goes into it, and there's so much positivity that comes out of increasing our, you know, the lower wages
Sure.
... and uplifting those people. But something specifically with the minimum wage that I'm interested in looking at is bringing back kind of regional authorities almost again, to kind of analyze and research the specific areas, because, you know, the standard of living here is a lot different than in Milwaukee or Madison. So I don't think the minimum wages are going to be the same for those two areas. So I think that's somewhere where we can find some compromise and say, well, maybe you don't want to go to $15 an hour, because that's not what's needed for this area, but maybe something like $10. But we really need to be having those conversations and do the research, and that's not happening right now. People just refuse to talk about it.
Well, and the other part of it, Aaron, is that if you raise the minimum wage for people and give them a living wage instead of just this lousy little money
Yeah.
... that they're getting of $7.25, maybe we wouldn't have so many people on state-funded assistance.
Exactly.
Badger care, right-to-work programs, or whatever we have out there. I don't know all the names of them these days, but, you know, we wouldn't have so many people
Yeah.
... on state-funded, you know, subsidies.
Yeah.
So, you know, and we're experiencing a problem, I know it's happened all over the place, but RDI and EDs
Yeah.
... you know, for people who have been here for their entire lives, like me, that's a staple of the community. It's an iconic place. And now they're for sale. And last year, they had to close for part of the time in the summer because they just simply couldn't get help.
Yeah.
When you can go to another place and find a higher wage, you can't fault these people for doing it.
Exactly.
And in a lot of cases, it is kids.
Yeah.
They're out there on roller skates, you know? You can't have 60-some-year-olds necessarily on a roller skate. I suppose you could, but it's mostly kids
Yeah.
... who work there, and students, and they're off making more money somewhere else.
And we have a huge problem right now with young people leaving Wisconsin. You know, they, I think it was when Governor Walker was still in, tried to put those ads in Chicago saying, we have beer and cheese, and, you know, beer and cheese doesn't do you any good when you're not making enough money to afford it.
Yeah.
So, you know, young people are leaving because they're looking for jobs that appreciate their hard work, that are paying them what they deserve, and giving them benefits. But really, what this goes to, I think, is giving employees, you know, their collective bargaining rights and allowing to unionize. Because really, when you're able to unionize and able to have that union with people and bargain for higher wages and better working conditions, people overall do better. And I think our economy, we've seen, has done better when our unions are doing better.
So you would advocate for getting rid of what Walker put forth
Yes.
... or really took away
Yeah.
... with Act 10 and
And right-to-work, yeah.
... give people the right to unionize again.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I think that's a great idea. You said one of, and this is from your website, obstructionist political games. What do you mean by that?
So this actually kind of goes back to when I first started thinking about running. So back in January during the lame duck session after Governor Evers had won, right away, even before being sworn in, Republicans went, you know, in secret meetings and decided to put forward a whole bunch of bills to rewrite his powers and the Attorney General, before they were even sworn in. So that shows me that they're not willing to work together, they're mad that they lost the governorship in the democratic process, so instead of listening to the will of the voters, they're going to change the rules to benefit themselves. And what have we seen? We've seen dysfunction already, we've seen confusion, and we've seen a record-low amount of bills being passed. I think almost around 30 or so have only been passed so far, and, you know, in years where there's been a split government, they've still been able to pass 200 to 300 bills. So I really think that our government's not working right now. And it's interesting, because we have one party who's in control of the Senate and the Assembly, but yet, they're not able to work with the governor. And I think this is a wake-up call to a lot of people, showing that, you know, we have the Democrats who are ready to work and pass these bills, they have so many that they're putting forward, but nothing is getting passed, it's being held up, and it's really just politicians playing politics.
Yeah.
And the average person, I, does not appreciate that.
Yeah. Well, you know, the other thing, you've mentioned transparency a couple of times, and one big transparency problem that I see is, yes, you can go on Wisconsin I, E-Y-E, just like I on Oshkosh.
Yeah.
You can go on Wisconsin I, and you can see when the sessions are in session.
Yeah.
But what you can't see, either on television or in person, is when there's caucuses.
Yeah.
And let's face it, that's where a lot of the backdoor
Oh, yeah.
... business is conducted, and things are pushed through in the 11th hour, and people don't know what the hell is being pushed through, and all of a sudden, we're saddled with these laws. I would personally like to see the caucuses, I mean, after all, this is our government, and I would like to see those caucuses made public, you know, open to the public. Why don't we get to see what you people are doing?
Yeah.
You're being paid with our tax dollars.
Exactly.
You know, so would you advocate for that?
I haven't actually thought about that, but that's something I would look into. And obviously, there are things that need to be, you know, in closed session, things that the public can't know right away.
Sure, closed session, yeah.
But, as you said, a lot of this backdoor deal-making does happen behind closed doors, when people aren't paying attention, and, you know, I really think it leads to a lot of inefficiencies. And, you know, when the lame duck came through, people in the State Senate were kind of given, like, all these things a day before they were supposed to vote on it, and it's like, how are we supposed to read this whole thing, you know, in less than 24 hours and then be expected to vote on it?[1622.72] So, you know, a lot of that political playing is going on. And I think it needs to stop.
Yeah. We're down to about a minute and a half left. And I, I can't believe the time has already gone. But this is another good reason why we need to have you back. So we can cover more things that you're interested in. But one thing that you are interested in is meaningful criminal justice reform. Is that something that you can briefly address as far as what you see the problem being and how you would like to reform that?
Yeah. So I've seen a lot of this at the county level because we have overpopulated prisons. And this is the case for a lot of the state. And we actually stopped them from expanding to jail because we wanted them to focus on mental health and other means of keeping people, you know, out of prisons and helping them get better. One thing I would look at is legalizing and decriminalizing marijuana for both recreational and medical purposes. I think it's pastime. Illinois has done it. Minnesota's on their way to doing it. Michigan's done it. And, you know, we're becoming surrounded. And you're going to see more people going to jail because they're going to these states and bringing it. You know, and it would help a lot of people who are in there for nonviolent crimes. They should be able to, you know, start their lives again because a lot of them have been ruined for this. But we need to look at sentencing. We need to look at minimum sentencing and how, you know, we're punishing people for crimes. There's a lot that goes into it. It's a very complex problem.
It is.
And it's also the private prison system that we need to look at and help dismantle because people are profiting off people being in prison.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, I don't think that's morally right.
Right. I, I agree with you, very much so. And our time is up. So we didn't get to anything really that I wanted to talk about. Well, we talked about a lot of things. But there is so much more to talk about.
Oh, yeah.
And I look forward to having you back. And I, I think that you're on the right track.
Thank you.
I think you've got a good handle on this. So congratulations on what you've done on the county board for not just those in your district, but the entire district, you know, the whole county as a whole. So thank you for that. So we've been putting up your website, I believe. But it is, tell me real quickly, it's wojo4wi, right?
Dot com, yep.
Yep. Wojo4wi.com. So thanks so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
And we'll have you back later in the year. We're going to take a short break. And when we come back, we will be joined by some folks running for the Oshkosh Common Council. We'll be right back. Are we clear? Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
It's more than charity.
For having me.
It's about helping people we live with. It's about being the type of person that the six-year-old version of ourselves wanted us to be. It's about community and looking out for one another. It's about money, yes, but it's so much more than money. It's about friendship and common values. It's about opening doors when others are slammed shut. It's about giving kids a place to be kids and growing up knowing they live in a community that cares about them. It's about making sure that everyone gets to see the dentist because we want to make sure that they have every last tooth and those smiles. Ultimately, that's it. It's about the smiles, old smiles and new smiles. It's about us, all of us, our community, living united. Because great things happen when we live united. Will you join us?
Oh, no, did I miss the exit?
Hey, pal, you look a little lost.
What?
You know your smartphone has GPS, don't you?
Yeah, but I'm driving right now. Let's text your sister to see if she's texting. Okay, look, I'll help. I've got a map. Okay. I am done with this distraction.
Not my hair dryer.
Hey, no! Ah, that distracted me. Okay, okay, I'll go.
Focus on driving, not the distractor. Find me a new driver.
Get lost.
Hi, everybody. Welcome back to the second half of I on Oshkosh. I continue to be your host, Cheryl Hens. And now I'm joined by two folks running for the Oshkosh Common Council, as I mentioned before the break. To my right is Lindsay Erickson. And to my left is Danny Garcia. And during the next 27 or minutes or so, we're going to hopefully find out a lot about them. And so why don't you each just take a minute or two and tell me why, you know, a little bit about yourself and why you're throwing your hat in the ring? Who wants to go first? Why don't we go alphabetic?
I'll take it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Lindsay Erickson. I'm running for Oshkosh City Council because I think that my perspectives as a millennial, a young woman, someone who grew up in a working-class background, someone with a public health background, need to be represented on council. So I believe that we need a variety of perspectives to be on council and to be sharing their experiences for council. Council deals with a lot of tough issues that impact people's lives. So we need that variety to really impact the decisions we make so that we can come to better outcomes. So in my day job, I also work at the Winnebago County Health Department as a community health strategist. So that means I work to make the community better so that people can be healthier. So I'm running because we have work to do.
Okay. All right. And we're going to get into some of those jobs that we need to tackle here. Danny, tell me a little bit about yourself.
Sure thing. My name is Danny Garcia. I'm also running for city council, also a bit younger. I'm a criminal defense attorney here in town with Petit and Dahmerhausen.
You look too young to be doing that.
The trials and tribulations of the profession, I guess, haven't caught up to me yet.
They will probably soon. Is that what you're saying?
Perhaps. By the time I end up on city council, maybe my hair will be a little grayer.
Yeah. How long have you been an attorney?
I've been an attorney for about five years now.
Holy cow. And you're how old?
I am 28.
Wow. Okay.
I do my best to impress.
I, I'm impressed. You've succeeded already. So what else about yourself?
But I also have a lot of political experience. I do a lot of work with the Democratic Party. I'm aware that this is a nonpartisan race. But I do have a lot of experience in politics, door-knocking, getting out, hearing people's opinions. And so I think that as someone in my standing, as someone with an education, with a very blessed background, that I have an obligation to give back to the community, I see a lot of ways that I think Oshkosh can move forward. I think we've come a long ways, but I think we can keep going. And I just want to make sure that we keep listening to everybody and move forward in a unified way.
Okay, excellent. Now, I, I do know that Lindsay, you're currently serving on the Oshkosh Plan Commission and the Transit Authority Board. And Danny, I think you probably took, well, you filled one of the seats on the Rental Housing Advisory Board when I stepped off.
That's correct.
I, I stepped off because Lori Palmieri called and said, "You know, we really need someone on the Board of Zoning Appeals." And that is something I had done for 10 years. And I thought, "Well, you know, I really like where I'm at, but the mayor's asking me to go back to something that I did." And so I made that switch. So I haven't had a chance to see what you've done so far on the Rental Housing Advisory Board. But I'd like to find out from each of you what you've encountered in your individual services to these boards and commissions and how that will form what you do in your service on the Common Council if you're elected. So we'll start with Danny this time around.
Sure. So like you said, I sit on the Rental Housing Advisory Board. A large part of that is because I'm very familiar with a lot of landlord-tenant law. I'm good at combing through and looking at the legality of what we plan on doing and whether we can or can't do things. One issue, for instance, that we're looking to tackle right now is there are a number of landlords that are discouraging tenants from looking into our rental inspection program. They're sending letters saying, "Don't do this." And really, it's a great program and ensures that everybody has safe and equitable housing. And so we're looking at a potential ordinance right now that would prohibit landlords from sending these kind of discouraging messages.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yes.
Because that has been a problem from day one.
Yes. People that don't want to participate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you have to wonder why, you know? I mean, if you're running a clean housing unit that's safe, you have to wonder why you would not want to have someone come in and do that. So I think that kind of legislation, from an ordinance standpoint, I think that's fantastic.
Thank you.
So, so how would all this help you serve on council?
So a lot of what I look into in rental housing has to do with housing in general. I think that it would, it, it also gives me a view of a landlord's perspective as well. I try to see both sides. So it really establishes in me a level of fairness, not just in relation to housing, but in relation to all issues. I really like to try to see both sides of an issue. So, you know, consumers versus business owners or versus employees. Everybody needs to come to the table. So for instance, you can't just say, "Well, landlords, you can't do this," or "We'll tax you," or landlords, you know, "You have to keep your house up to these standards." Because, I mean, there are good landlords out there that are just trying to get by with, you know, single units. And you have to make sure that that's fair to them as well. And so just combined with my knowledge of housing in general and what we need in order to have fair housing, what we need in order to clear up belighted areas, I think that that will help me serve on council quite a bit.
Fantastic. All right. So Lindsay, what about you? I'm sure that you have seen a lot serving in both these capacities.
I have. They've been very interesting boards to be on. So I think going on the housing thread, being on Plan Commission, we've encountered some, we've been approving some TIF districts lately that have impacted affordable housing, which is an issue I really care about. So most recently, we approved the TIF district for the Cabrini School Development, which would provide affordable senior apartments. And so affordable housing, there's a big need in Oshkosh. I think historically, we've had a lot of discussion of what that actually means. Most recently, there was a report that came out from East Central Regional Planning Commission that showed 44% of renters in Oshkosh are paying more than 30% of their income on rent. So that's being rent burdened.
Yeah.
So we need more availability of rental, affordable rental housing for folks. So being on Plan Commission, we've been able to work with developers, encourage more affordable housing options for people, more mixed-use options and developments. And then also being on Transit Advisory Board, I've seen how having the voice of transit riders is really important in the city. Transit should be as equal of an option for, of transportation for folks. We have an issue with, you know, being able to find workers for jobs. So transit can be an option for people to get to work. And so looking at other options, how do we expand transit services? How do we better support transit in the city?
Okay. Well, very good. Well, I want to applaud both of you. Not just for running at the young ages that you are. I didn't ask how old you were.
I'm 27.
27. Okay. So about the same age, both millennials, as you said. But I want to applaud you for, you know, taking on this challenge at, you know, the young age that you are, being concerned enough about your city to do it and for serving on these boards and commissions that you, that you both do. Because I've been doing this show now since 2002 with a year break in between. And you would not believe the number of people who start running for office, they've never served a day on any kind of committee or board for the city. They don't have the first clue how the city operates. And you do learn that, you know? I mean, you don't learn every new one, but you get a sense of how the city runs and the structure that it's set up under. And, and they enter the race just because they've got a burr under their saddle about one particular issue. And I'm not getting that sense from either of you. You are not running just on one issue. You're running because you want to make Oshkosh a better place, and I applaud you for that. There are three seats available, correct?
Correct.
And two are incumbents. And then Steve Herman is not seeking reelection again. So there will be one newbie for sure on there. So it's going to be one of the two of you, I would guess.
And there, there are two other candidates, so Michael Ford and Robert Wilcox, too.
Yep. And Michael is going to be on the show, as is the other gentleman.
Robert Wilcox.
Yeah, yeah. So, and Matt Mugirauer is running again also. So it's, it's going to be interesting. And one way or the other, though, I think we're going to have somebody new. So.
Yeah, April 7th.
Yeah, April 7th. And there's, because there's no primary either. So it's a general election on April 7th. And there's plenty of opportunity to get registered to vote. Do it now. You need a state ID of some sort to be able to vote. We could have a big conversation about that, but we won't do that now. But, you know, if you're in doubt about anything, call the Oshkosh City Hall. Pam Mubrigs, our city clerk, she is brilliant at what she does. And, you know, her office staff is equally as brilliant and helpful. So call them, find out what you need to do to register to vote. And you can vote by mail, by absentee ballot. You can do early voting. It's easy. There's no excuse for not voting. Sorry, but there's none. So that said, I want to turn-
And I'm glad you said it.
Yes. Local elections matter.
Yeah, I just, you know, well, all elections, really. But, you know, local is what I think most often affects us. And it affects us in the greatest of ways. And, you know, we can sit here and talk about Trump and all that stuff. But at the end of the day, yeah, that affects us. But this, the hometown stuff, is what's really affecting our pocketbooks the most. And so I want to talk about some of those things. Lindsay, your website says you want to reach out to residents who haven't been heard from before during elections or during decisions that, about decisions that impact their lives. How will you, how do you feel that we're failing in that area? And how will you accomplish that? What are you proposing?
So I think the biggest issue has been transparency and communication on behalf of the city. So making sure that residents are aware of what's going on in the city, how policies that are passed affect their lives and what that impact will be. I think, I saw recently in the City Manager's newsletter that they just opened up a hot spot in City Hall. So during city council meetings, if folks come to talk or just observe and have children, they can use a room next to the city council chambers that has toys and things for kids to be in. So it's building that accessibility for people to be able to engage with city council. And I think it's also city council members needing to get out into the community. So we talk about wanting to bring different perspectives to the table. But I think often, we need to bring the table to people. So if it's knocking on doors, going to events, having coffee with people, I think we need to do a better job of listening to people's experiences and using those perspectives to better inform the issues that we decide on.
So once they're elected, you're, you're suggesting that people who are elected go out into the community and hold like, I, I think it would be tough to knock on doors.
Right, yeah.
You know, you can't reach that many people by doing that because most of the council members work.
Right.
And, but, you know, maybe holding like a town hall kind of thing? Is that what you're sort of suggesting?
I think having a variety of avenues for people to be able to engage with their city council member. Since we don't have direct representation by ward, you kind of have a variety of options of city council members to talk to.
Yep.
So making sure that we're accessible as members and being there for people to share their experiences.
Okay. How do you feel about the city's website? It has recently been redone in the last year. And there's some kinks that still need to be worked out.
Yeah.
Do you feel that that is getting the message out to people about things that are happening? Or do you feel that needs something else?
I think, I think it's a step in the right direction. It's definitely gotten better. But I think there's other avenues that we have to look at. So having a social media presence, many folks, that's how they engage, is through their phones, on social media. I think of other communities in the state who are doing a great job of having a social media presence, keeping people up to date, and also using that as a tool for discussion with residents. And I think it's also that face-to-face interaction, making sure that people know what our city government does for them and how the decisions that they make impact their life.
Okay, excellent. Danny, what do you think about how we're doing from a transparency standpoint? I mean, that's a word that's floated around. That's a buzzword.
Right.
It is.
That really is used a lot. Do you think we're being transparent? Could we do better?
I'll do my best to interpret that. I think we're trying to be as transparent as possible. I think we just need to make the public more aware of what we're doing. Like you said, I think that we need to make sure we're more actively getting out into the community. I know that on the Rental Housing Advisory Board, for instance, we have a lot of educational materials. We're putting together seminars. We're doing all sorts of stuff. Our hardest part is getting people aware of the fact that we're doing this and that these programs even exist. And so I think that we need to be, I don't think it's so much an issue of transparency as it is, we need to make the public more aware of what we're doing so that they can take advantage of what resources we have to offer, because there are many. Obviously, we want to work on developing more. But at the same time, we need to get people using the ones that we already have. That, and I also agree with the fact that we need to be talking to people in general just to figure out what they care about. I know that in talking to people while I've been running, people will say, "Well, what are you running on?" And I'll usually respond with, "Well, what do you care about?" Because I want to know. I want to make sure that I'm representing the people of Oshkosh and not just going about and doing things that I think are going to benefit the city when in reality, that's not something anybody wants. So, yeah, I really just think that more communication between the council and the people that they represent is the key to solving a lot of our issues.
Okay. Busing of students and the city's collaboration with the Oshkosh Area School District is something that has been bandied about for over a year now. You know, people say they want to provide free busing for these students who are evidently falling through the cracks in getting to school. Because they, they live in the city, so they're not given busing, per se, by Cobason or whatever. But you're trying, they're trying to get these students bussed to the school somehow. And they say it would be free, but let's face it, at the end of the day, it's not free. Somebody's paying for it. And just like people's budgets are strapped, so are the budgets of the city, the school district. Where does each of you stand on that issue? Have you given it some thought? You and the transit, I'm sure, have thought about it.
Oh, yeah. So I am fully supportive. I think that we need to make sure that kids can get to school. But also, it's, it's a bigger issue than just getting to school. It's also making sure that our students are connected throughout the community to opportunities. So whether it be getting to the Boys and Girls Club, going to the library, being involved in extracurriculars, or being able to get a job. You know, I, I know you mentioned in the previous segment about RD and Ed's. I think that is an opportunity that we can have students who are looking for work after school to be able to access those jobs and fill those jobs. school to be able to access those jobs and fill those jobs. So providing transit to students, I think, is a valuable thing to make, help ensure that our future generations both know how to use transit. I think that's a great life skill to know, but also be able to connect to opportunities that we have in our community.
So what do you think, how do you think that this should be paid for? Should it be the city? Should it be the school district? Should it be both? Where do you feel the money would come from for it?
Yeah, so I think the current proposal, that it's a kind of a three-party, so a shared agreement between the school district, the city, and then some private funds, I think that's a model that we can share. You know, these are our, our kids in our community. So I think because we're connecting kids to other opportunities in the community, the city should have some sort of stake at that. And it's $30,000. The school, the transit buses, Go Transit, they're going to run anyway. We might as well have people on the buses.
That's the cost of, of doing this for these kids?
Correct. So $30,000 on the city, $30,000 on the school district.
Oh, I see. So $90,000 altogether.
Correct.
Is that annually?
Yes. So that would be a three-year pilot. They'll see, depending on the, how many students actually utilize this, if that number needs to change after that, but that's the initial proposal.
Okay. And the private money has, have someone, has someone stepped up to the board already on this?
Yes, yeah. So I believe there's been one donor who has stepped up to provide that $30,000.
Okay. Well, it's nice to see that some of these private folks are stepping up and, you know, coming to the table on it, because that's important, too. I mean, I don't think that any governmental agency can do it on their own. I want to talk a little bit about our lousy roads in the city of Ashkosh. And, you know, they have been lousy forever, and that is, you can say it's the fault of, or you can say it's simply because previous councils were trying to be frugal and keep taxes low. And yet, as we're seeing, we are now paying for it. And now it's really costing a lot more money. So roads are not getting fixed as fast as they're being wrecked, I think. And you'll never catch up. The city will never, ever, ever catch up. So how do each of you propose fixing our roads in a faster, at a faster pace? Danny, why don't we start with you? Do you propose like a wheel tax? Or what do you think?
Sure. I know that there's been a very long history of proposed solutions that have all fallen through the cracks. I mean, you had like the TIE suggestion, which would be taxing different houses and organizations per trips traveled. So for instance, you have a one-bedroom or like a one-family home, that's going to average about like nine and a half trips. You have a business that's going to average about 1,000 trips.
Trips per?
Trips per.
Week, per month?
Per day.
Per day, okay.
Yep. And then they would tax it based on that. I know that the Chamber of Commerce was very against that, so the plan fell through. I thought that that was a reasonable solution, though I do understand how that does get tougher on businesses. But on the other hand, I really would like to see a solution in which, you know, the new moon, for instance, doesn't get taxed as much as the Walmart. And so that would be a solution to that. I know what is being floated around right now is just a simple flat tax on if it's a one or two-family home, then it's something like $18 a month. And if it's a business. Oh, $8? Okay, yeah. And then if it's any other sort of established, like, building, then it's $50 a month. I think that that's a simple, but possibly elegant solution, because sometimes simple is better, in the sense that now we don't have to run around and make all sorts of calculations. It takes a lot of the administrative work out of it. I have to admit, I don't know the answer. I've heard a lot of different proposals, and I'd like to hear other people's opinions on them. Right now, I think that the best one I've heard, like I said, is the TIE, but if that's not going to be voted on, then the simple flat calculation sounds fine to me, especially because then if you have just one and two-bedroom home, family homes, then it's not disproportionately affecting certain families.
Well, I, I think these are all good ideas that we've been kicking around here. We're down to about four minutes. I don't know where the time is.
Goes very fast.
Yeah, it does. And I, there are some questions that I want to get to, but I just want to take a moment to say to the city, you know, you've got a wonderful tool in Polco, and I think you should utilize it as much and as often as you can to get people's ideas on all these different things. I think they're, the city's doing a good job so far, but I think they need to continue to do that. And if you're watching this program and you have access to the internet, and most people do, I would encourage you to download the Polco app. And, you know, it's a free app, doesn't cost you anything to download, it doesn't cost you anything to use it, but it's a way to stay in touch with the city of Ashkosh, and that's important. It's a way also to know of what's going on in the city. So it's one more tool to, for the city to be transparent and let folks know what they're doing. So it's just Polco, P-O-L-C-O. And you can also get it, I think, through the See Click Fix app or Ashkosh Connect. So let's talk for a moment about the continued water rate increases, because that is what's driving people out of their minds. And, you know, we've had three or four increases in the water bills in the last year alone. There's several more to come in future months, or future years, and I don't know where it's going to end. What can we do, if anything, to get these water bills under control so people aren't experiencing? And I'm not talking about just the people who have had some excessive water bills. I'm talking about water bills in general. What can we do? And we'll start with you, Lindsay, on this one.
True. Yeah, I think this is similar with the special assessments, too. It's going to take a lot of perspectives to talk into this issue. I think something needs to be done, and I think we need to look at some equitable solutions that, you know, we're not strapping folks who may not be able to pay this extraordinary amount of a bill. And I think, you know, looking at some creative solutions that we can come to. Again, I'm not sure what the ultimate solution should be, but being open to multiple perspectives to be able to make more equitable solutions.
Okay, excellent. Danny, do you have any thoughts on that?
I definitely don't have the answer. But again, it's, I think it's very possible that a more simple, elegant solution could possibly solve this. So for instance, something like was done with the assessment, where you have certain homes that the water tax is raised to a certain amount, and then all other areas, it's raised to a different amount beyond that in coming years. That's an idea that obviously needs to be kicked around and analyzed, but that could do it. But again, like you said, this is going to require a lot of talking to figure out, but it does need to be figured out.
Sure. In about the next minute and a half, I want to talk briefly about the budget, because a lot of times, people say, oh, the budget, you're not being transparent. Oh, we've got less than a minute. I guess I'm just not going to get to this question.
For next time.
But I will say that, you know, for budget transparency, the budget workshops are televised. You can also attend them in person. They start budget workshops as early as July these days, and so, and the bills don't get approved until November and sent out in December. You can get a copy of the budget online, you can have one prepared for you. I don't know what the cost is, if anything. But there are ways to get ahold of the budget and to see what's going on. And so I'm not sure why people feel that there's no budget transparency, but I've heard that from some folks. So I thank you both for being here. I know we didn't get to a lot of things, but I hope that you at least got to get your message out on the issues that we did talk about. And again, the election is Tuesday, April 7th, and please register to vote and make sure you get to the polls or vote in one way or another. Thanks again for being here. And thanks to Erin for the first half. And thanks to the crew and you at home for watching. We'll see you next time. Until then, take care. Keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Ashkosh.